Good evening and welcome to the Merrimack School Board meeting for March 18th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. And I'm going to open up the public participation portion of tonight's meeting. If you'd like to speak to the board tonight, we ask that you come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And if you're a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name. The microphone is open.
Truck mower, Ford Depot Street. You know, if everybody sat in the pew until the aisles were cleared, there wouldn't be any crowding in church. Kind of feels like that. I wonder why we don't have crowds of people coming and wanting to publicly participate. I want to congratulate the school board on their annual district meeting. I believe that the appropriate questions and information have been passed along to the voters. And I would encourage the voters to confirm the needs of the school district by an appropriate vote of yes on our budget and most particularly on the scaled back version of the SAU facility plan. There's no question that it's desperately needed in the district. And I would still encourage anybody who would like to see the present facilities to knock on the superintendent's door and to ask for a tour. I'm sure you'd be accommodated and you can see that it's just not an efficient place to do the kind of business that not only do we desire to do, but which is ahead of us to do. And having said that, I would also like to encourage people to support the budget as proposed. It's what allows us to move forward with plans and programs. Everyone understands the financial condition of the community and the state in general. But we needn't be parsimonous at the expense of our children, their future, and their appropriate educational place in the community once they matriculate. So, thank you all very much.
All right, seeing no one else at the microphone, we will close public participation for tonight. We shall move on to recognitions.
We have no recognitions tonight, but hopefully we will have some within the next few meetings.
Great. Then we'll move on to informational updates, starting with superintendent update.
Our administrators have completed the annual report. We've reviewed it. Any revisions that needed to be made, we have made them and it is off to the printer to be printed. Thank you to you, the school board members, for contributing importantly once again to that important document. At the present time, we're calculating, based on instructional hours, we anticipate the last day of school to be. As of right now, the last day, because we've had one snow day, is June 18th. However, the state does give communities the option. As you know, the K-6 requirement is that we meet a minimum, that is a minimum of 945 instructional hours for grades seven through 12. It's 990. That is not necessarily the target. As I said, that is the minimum. So we're calculating based on the number of actual instructional hours with lunch and passing times at the upper grade levels removed recess, up to 30 minutes of recess does count towards instructional time at the elementary level. And so at the next meeting, I'll be announcing to you what I think will be our last day of school as long as we don't have any more snow days. And I'm always reluctant to say that because we've had some whoppers sometimes in March and April and even early May. So, but we've had a pretty good winter so far. And so I'll be letting you know because we want the staff to know, we want the parents to know also because they're starting to get calls in terms of what do you anticipate the last day of school being. So we'll have that. It's always an exciting calculation and always exciting to talk over. And if we can save a couple of days at the end of the year for professional development, we want to use those days to our advantage for curriculum related and other safety, perhaps other types of mandatory trainings that we need to do. So I'll let you know at the next meeting. We are going to begin bringing policies back slowly right now. We're waiting for Sandy's return. As you know, she was recuperating from some surgery. But I will bring back at the next meeting, the dress code policy. I've incorporated some of the revisions that you suggested at a meeting way back when. And so it's time to bring that back. Amy and I, along with Melissa, will be meeting with the principals shortly to review staff evaluations and talk about any decisions that may need to be made. Fortunately, those are very few because we have an excellent staff who do an outstanding job on a day-to-day basis. And I will be conducting the administrative evaluations. As you know, last year was the first year we came up with an evaluation process and an evaluation instrument. We'll be doing that over the next few weeks. And I will keep you abreast of all other activities. Wanted to keep it a little bit brief tonight because we've got Adam here and we're going to be talking about strategic plan update and a couple of other things.
Thanks, Bill. All right, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update, Amy.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to take a minute. I know that Chase is sitting on the end and she'll take a minute to introduce herself. But I'm just so excited to have a student rep back on the board to tell us about things like the Texas Roadhouse roles are available for order. That was really important and all the other activities that are coming up because I know that we were missing out on that. So I'm looking forward to hearing from you more in the future, Chase. I feel like I have a lot of assessment things to tell you. Most of you have been in public schools, so you know that the spring, you know, when the daffodils come up, there's a lot of assessments that go along with that for better or worse. So a new thing that happened this year was that the New Hampshire SAS writing assessment was moved up as per the Department of Education's request. And that was done so that they could introduce some new writing prompts and they've also included a new narrative format. They decided that they needed some additional time to do human scoring to be able to set those standards for the assessment. And so they did the assessment this year and it'll close by the end of this week. And then next year, the writing assessment will return to its regular schedule when it's done with reading, math, and science. So this was more, I did get some, you know, calls and questions from parents, as I'm sure other administrators did, just wondering, you know, why are we just doing the writing assessment? It was really to be able to provide information to the DOE. And then the regular New Hampshire SAS window will open April 1st and it runs through June 7th. And I would just encourage parents to be on the lookout for schedules from your building administration to let you know when those tests will happen in your student's particular grade level or particular PLT. And if they get accommodations and things like that, IEP teams and 504 teams will be able to identify and ensure that those are in place. Most of our testing will happen in May. So if you don't hear anything before April vacation, you know, don't be nervous about that. I also just want to let folks know that the access testing window has closed and you may remember me mentioning that earlier. It opened February 1st and that's for all of our English language learners and they're required to take that assessment on an annual basis. Merrimack Middle School and Reed's Ferry School were also selected for and participated in the NAPE Assessment, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, also known as the Nation's Report Card. It's been around since about 1969 and they really look at short and long-term trends in student achievement. So we have, there was a group that was identified at Reed's Ferry. I think it was fourth grade and then eighth grade at the middle school. And it's just pockets of kids. It's not the whole grade. They just really let us know, you know, who will need to participate in that assessment. And then I just want to let folks know that Merrimack High School will hold their first ever assessment day on Wednesday, March 27th. And that will involve the freshmen, freshmen and sophomores taking the PSATs. All juniors will take the SAT, which is their statewide assessment. And there will be remediation opportunities for seniors if they need them. And then finally, on Friday, March 29th, there will be a two-hour early release in the Merrimack School District so that staff can receive differentiated training to support our migration to Google. And we're also going to do some required training on our new term card. I feel like I've said a lot.
Thank you, Amy.
Can I just add one thing? Wasn't there a, I just think this was really cool. Didn't the language department, did we already talk about this?
Oh, they did that.
I don't remember what it's called, but it was really cool because it can give kids a distinction of having mastered a language.
Yes, Christine Randolph is going to be upset with me that I don't remember.
I might be able to pull up her email and we might be able to just.
Chase, do you know what the assessment is called? It has letters.
Of course it does. Oh, here we go. New Hampshire Seal of Bilinguality and Learning About Proficiency, AAPPL. Yep, for Mandarin, Arabic, French, Spanish students. Or the ALIRA for Latin students. Some upper-level world language students can be awarded the New Hampshire Seal of Bilinguality as a result of their test scores. So I think that was a really cool opportunity to be able to see how our world language program at the high school is performing. And so I was really excited as a parent to hear that.
And I think they were excited about, that was new. We brought that in the budget last year when it went through the budget process and you may remember asking some of those questions. And it really is about students being able to prove their proficiency in a language other than English. They can put it on their transcript. They can get a seal on their diploma and on their transcript. So it's a really exciting opportunity and we were able to offer it in all of the languages, which is significant. You have to have kids that are performing on a particular level to enable them to take it. But it was a great opportunity.
Yeah, I'm really excited to see the results.
Okay, moving on, Assistant Superintendent for Business update, Matt.
Oh, thank you. Seeing we had deliberative session a couple of weeks ago, that was, I thought that was a really awesome turnout. I was glad everybody showed up. I, it's been the largest deliberative session I've been through here. I have been through ones that are much more than that in other places, but this is a heck of a good showing for Merrimack and I appreciate everyone who got up to the microphone and spoke. So I just want to thank the community for allowing us to hear their input and feeling comfortable enough to say what's on their mind and not a fear of any judgment or anything like that. You know, it's all good whenever we get public comment for any issues we're talking about. It is all good. I worked on the voter's guide. There's going to be a proof sent to the printer, but when that comes back, I'd like to probably farm it out to the board to have them take a look at it before it goes public. But when it goes public and when everything is ready to go, we'll post it on our website and then we'll have it printed and we'll have it mailed out as usual to every household in Merrimack. We, in the grants management system, 2425, the Safe Schools Grants for around $370,000 something thousand has been lit up now so we can start putting all the detail in. We're going to be putting together some bid specifications for that, for lock sets and for additional cameras. Part of that's going to be entailing meeting with the principals with a building map and Nikki will be over your school to say, you know, how many cameras you're allotted and where would you like to see the cameras placed? Where are your trouble spots? We just, Tom and I just don't look at the buildings and say, I think we want one here and here and here. Every time we meet with the principals of the building because they know the buildings best and they know the areas where they would like to have some coverage. So that's going to be forthcoming. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Matt.
Matt, with the updated cameras, will these cameras be able to hold the information longer? So if there is an incident, the principals or the assistant principals go back, do you know how long that we're able to?
Yeah, we can, we can hold information for 90 days right now.
90 days.
We have the bandwidth with that. We may have, depending on how many cameras we add, that's going to add to the load. We may have to update the capacity of the servers, but we're going to take that into account when we do the buildup. So we want to have a history because you never know what's going to happen down the road.
Right. Well, that's what, that's amazing. 90 days is a long time and it gives them plenty of time. So if they have to go back and look at something, perfect.
Great. Okay, moving on to super, or not super, school board update. And I just want to echo what Matt was saying earlier about the turnout for the deliberative session. And again, thanking everybody for their flexibility and understanding for having to change the date and relocate and move things around and all of that stuff. So thank you, everyone, for your patience as we worked through that. And, and just like Matt said, everybody who came and spoke and, you know, let their voices heard at the meeting, that's such a valuable thing for us to hear. And I'll just remind folks, you don't have to wait until the deliberative session to do that. These meetings are open the first and third Monday, first and third Monday of every month. You are welcome to come and share those thoughts and insights. We love to hear them and they really do make a difference and they really do have an impact in our decision-making. So again, thank you, everybody, for coming. And like I said, don't be a stranger. Come and, come and visit us regularly. And then I also want to take a minute, Amy kind of stole my thunder here, but I wanted to introduce, I wanted to introduce our new student representative who will be joining us to the end of the school year, Chase Rowe, currently a senior at Merrimack High School. And I wanted to give Chase a minute to kind of introduce herself and say a few words if she was ready.
Perfect. All right. Yeah, thank you so much. Like Mr. Martin said, I am a senior at MHS and I'm so excited to be here. I'm really grateful for this position and I can't wait to do amazing work with everybody on this board. So yeah, thank you so much for having me.
And the other hat I wear as a music teacher, I see Chase's name all the time, an accomplished percussionist, just so everybody knows. I think that's important. All right, moving on, strategic plan update from Mr. Bill Olson.
Yes, thank you. And before I present the, sort of the update on the strategic plan, I just want to take a minute to thank Matt, once again, all of the incredible work that he has done, everything budget-related, SAU-related, because he is relentless in terms of running the numbers, providing information to all of us, to all of you, to the voters. So Matt, once again, job extremely well done and thank you very much. About, well, about a year ago, we began the process of developing a three-year strategic plan. As you know, many years ago, strategic plans used to be 10 years in length. However, with the pace of change, the rate of change, not only domestically, but globally, that timeframe shortened to five years and then to three years. And generally, we look at three to, three to five years. So back in our August retreat last year, we began some preliminary work on the development of a strategic plan. We hired Mark Dolan from the New Hampshire School Boards Association at a very, very attractive price, far, far less than other contractors that we interviewed. And Mark has been facilitating meetings with us since our August retreat of last year. We put together a, and I have to thank Amy for the extraordinary amount of work that she has done also in the strategic plan. Thank Chase for, one of the participants, and Naomi done an outstanding job. We have a 23-member committee. It's fluctuated a little bit with, with membership, but we've stayed pretty strong throughout the entire process. In the development of our strategic plan, we are incorporating your goals, the school board goals that we've talked about. I think those meetings in June have been invaluable for the last couple of years, made a big difference in allowing us to set the course. We have incorporated the work of a vision of a learner and a vision of a graduate, both done by a separate committee and also a high school team in preparation for the NIESC review with a vision of the graduate. We are presently in the process of collecting and Chase participated in some student focus group input. I think Holly Hall, correct me if I'm wrong, Chase, is facilitating that. And in April, we will be conducting a community survey. We're in the process, just in the process of beginning to discuss that. We need to talk about the questions we want to ask, the information that we want to receive from the public. In terms of the focus areas that we are concentrating on in developing goals and strategies, we are looking at the focus area of the vision of a learner and graduate. We have student outcomes. We have the alignment of curriculum and instruction, the culture of wellness, facilities and family and community engagement and communication. Those are sort of broad categories that cover most of, if not all of, the operations in our school district. And so for each one of these six categories, and there are seven here, but actually the vision of a learner, the vision of a graduate are combined into one focus group. Six categories, we're developing goals and strategies and measurement criteria for them. It's going to take a little bit longer for us to complete the work. I anticipate that we will probably finish sometime in May and we want to review the draft with you and the leadership team. So our progress to date has been the developing the goals, strategies, and success measures for each focus area. We have been receiving focus group input from our Merrimack High School students. We have wonderful students and we're looking for as much engagement as possible. And we are designing, in collaboration with Mark Dolan, a community survey to receive as much information as possible to help provide us with direction. The work yet to be done is finish writing our goals and strategies and success measures for each focus area. We'll review the student input and incorporate that into the plan. We will develop and disseminate a community survey and analyze the responses and incorporate that into our strategic plan. I will review the draft with you and the leadership team and we will present to you and the community. We anticipate right now sometime in May, a little bit later than we anticipated. But you know, we've been very extraordinarily busy over the last several months. We've had a couple of meetings interrupted by events that require us to cancel the meeting and reschedule. But the team still has a lot of energy and a lot of drive and we're pleased to say that. Membership has held strong. Amy, if you, because you've done a tremendous amount of work also. And Chase, if you want to, and Naomi, if you want to comment on your perspective and how it's gone and where we're going.
I think, I think we're making great progress. I mean, we have a great group of stakeholders. We have terrific parents that have been on the committee, two terrific students. The other student is Matthew Brown, who's a sophomore. So we have a sophomore and a senior, which we think has been great. They also have some shared interests, but then they each, you know, represent different groups of students. We've got the Director of School Counseling and the Director of Pathways to Graduation. Both Harley and Kay are on that, on the committee. So we're really looking at, you know, some of our more veteran administrators and teachers are on there, representation from each building. I really feel like we've done a lot of work. Still some, you know, a fair amount ahead of us. The community survey, I think, is the piece that we're missing. We've been using the data from the Vision of a Learner surveys that we did that are still fairly recent because we're really looking at student outcomes. But we are going to push out another community survey once we have the goal, goals and strategies a little more firm so that they can give us direct information about them. But I've been really pleased. I know that, as Bill said, you know, some meetings are more well-represented than others given lots of competing, you know, we've got basketball games and football games and soccer games and, you know, concerts. It's just been a lot. But we've stayed pretty consistent, meeting twice a month on Wednesday evening. So I think we're making good progress and I'm looking forward to the final product.
Yeah, just to add on to that, speaking specifically on the student outcomes, which Mrs. Doyle just mentioned briefly, we have seen a really great turnout for the student focus groups that Mr. Olson was talking about this past Thursday and the previous Thursday before that. We had groups of nine students come and meet with Matthew Brown and I and Mr. Hall and really just to discuss different questions about their plans for the future, their vision of the school, their role as a student. And we've noticed not only a lot of different demographics of students represented, but also a lot of really valuable feedback that we necessarily hadn't thought of as a committee of different demographics from the town. So yeah, it's been a really valuable experience and I think we're really excited to present what we've learned.
I wanted to add on to what Amy said. There's a couple of members of the committee who don't have kids too, and who are business leaders in the community. So it's a really well-rounded group of people. One of the things that's been fascinating for me, being on the committee, is because they started with our goals, basically, and then they went through the process with leadership, the way Bill said. And so hearing the input from all of these stakeholders on the things that we value and have decided our priorities for the district has been really valuable for me and seeing like where people fall in, in relationship with all of that.
So I just, I'm very proud to be a member of this school board because we have such exceptional leadership that, you know, focuses their work. They measure our progress. They have a roadmap to progress. They engage stakeholders and they engage our students. And so, so just thank you for all that work. And, and I know we're just all, we say it all the time, we're moving in the right direction and it's so exciting for us.
Yeah, and just a testament too to the dedication our leadership has to this district. I mean, amongst all the meetings you've seen us have throughout the last couple of months, add two more a month to that, and that's what these guys are doing with their time, working towards making this district a better place. So thank you for all your time and energy and all this because it's only going to yield positive results. So thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, new business. And we have an update from our athletic director tonight. Mr. Adam French is joining us to give us a little rundown of what's going on. Yep. There we go.
So thanks for having me. It was, it's been an interesting run, jumping into this job in the middle of a sports season. And while still teaching, at the beginning, I was still teaching my science classes and trying to help find a teacher. And it's a, it's a challenge and that's kind of what the story of my life's been, is a lot of challenges. So this, this winter sports season has been wonderful. It's weird. I have coached, this is my 25th year in education and last year was the first year I hadn't been a coach. And here I am, I jumped right back in and I grabbed all the teams.
Now you're the coach of the coach.
And I've coached with a lot of these coaches because I've coached many different sports in all the different seasons. And, and so it was, it was, it was fun jumping back in because I totally love it. The reason I got out is because we had had our second daughter in, in the middle of the pandemic and I just decided to spend a little more time with my kids. And, and I've been lucky enough, I love everything I do. I always loved getting up and coming to work in the morning and I did that before. And I'm learning to do that now. I've been, I've been putting in a lot of time, but it's to make next year a little easier and, and learn a lot of lessons. And so this year, I don't have necessarily everything, like to compare the numbers we have this year to last year or what we had in the fall to this year. I didn't have all the old information, so I'm kind of digging back in and trying to get it. But right now, as of earlier, about three o'clock today, we had 273 athletes signed up for spring sports. 126 girls, 147 boys. That's about a 46% girls and 54% boys. And if you look at our school, it's 48 and 52, so they're pretty close. We have softball and baseball and girls and boys lacrosse and girls and boys track and field and girls and boys tennis. And for the first time at Merrimack this year, we're going to have a unified track team as well. So I looked at some of the high points and the challenges this year and I always like to look at the challenges first. I think the biggest challenge was just kind of coming in at the point I came in and not necessarily having all the schedules for all the sports set up. We didn't have access to family ID, so none of the kids could actually register until about a week and a half before the season started because we were trying to get the password so I could set it up. And, and just learning all the different systems and how they worked, how, how entering the information worked. Went in one place and, and came out in the NHIA and trying to learning all the people at the NHIA and what their rules were. And it's, it's pretty easy. Luckily, I have a wonderful, there, there's a wonderful support in the NHIA and the athletic directors across this state. They all jump in and really help you. I could pick up a phone and call any one of them and they'll drop what they're doing to help me answer a question. So as much as there was a challenge, it was a lot of help there too. Building relationships with coaches. You know, I, I didn't have the privilege of doing end of the season reports with the coaches last year. And doing, you know, preseason evaluations with them, because everything had already started going. So we kind of formed our relationships on the go. I, I made it, and I made it in and out of all the practices and, and made it in and out of all the games and got to the state meets. And, and, and a lot of it was like an informal, kind of like when I, when I was teaching. I think a lot of what I learned from teachers is the informal, you know, the walkthrough, the, the conversation. Before and after our practice or at a game. And just kind of jotting down some information, fielding questions from them. And, and building those relationships. It's just the beginning and I, and I would like to improve a little bit about that. And I'll get to that a little bit later as far as evaluations. And I, I think my biggest goal is to make Merrimack a welcoming place. I want everybody, when they come to Merrimack and for a sporting event, I want them to say, I had a wonderful time. I feel safe. I had a great time here and I want to come back. And so, you know, I, there, there were a few changes that I'd made that. Although I think, I think a lot of times in changes, there's always going to be a little issue here or there. And I, I think one of the things was to kind of protect our student athletes and, and the visiting players. Basketball games across the state have been getting a little bit more intense, a lot of sporting events. And so I did remove, move the benches. So I had our team sit next to our fans, just to kind of keep that little interaction away. And although it wasn't necessarily popular 100% across the board, I did get some good feedback from it. And the best feedback I got were some officials that actually came to the games after the games. They came up to me and said like, this was a wonderful atmosphere. I really liked the change that was made. So, and I think when people start to realize that you're making, you know, I'm, I'm making these changes for the good. And I'm trying to make Merrimack a welcoming place. I think it's just trying to learning those lessons. And I think with time, those things helping. So. I also have high points. This winter, our gymnastics, we had Mia LeBlanc. She came, she was the defending state champion. She came in by a point, hundredth of a, a hundredth of a point. She came in second place this year, almost defending her state championship. And hockey, our hockey, boys hockey team finished first in division two in the regular season. And Connor Dunn ended up being the division two state MVP. Basketball, Logan Day was first team all-state in defense. He also had a wonderful steal at the end of a game to, to the, the visiting team. Shot free throws to an empty end of the gym and missed them both. And then he got a steal and hit a game-winning shot. And so that was nice. And I'd say we had a cheer team this year. I did not realize that we had actually not had a cheer team last year. And so when I did the signups this year, I was, it was kind of in the middle of signups and I'd contacted the coach. And she was surprised that 15 girls signed up and, and they really progressed throughout the year. And it was kind of nice and exciting to see that we have that many more people. A lot of freshmen signed up and I like having more people participate. Next, in April 2nd, we'll be taking 19 students that are, were nominated as scholar athletes to the ceremony in Concord. We worked with the middle school AD, Dave Babbin. He had been working with the football coach to help make sure that all the, the eighth graders that wanted to come do off-season workouts and get ready to move to the high school. They had run through family ID and they checked their physicals and checked medical, any medical issues. The nurses up at the middle school did a really good job and provided a list if there were any special circumstances. I found out that he'd been doing that for football, so I contacted him and asked him about other sports. Because other sports were interested in having eighth graders come up and work out. And Dave jumped right in and, and took that on. And so we have, he's, he's willing to do that for any other sport. So our girls soccer team set up a family, uh, sign up on family ID and they were able to go through and make sure they were all properly signed off with parents. And we had a list that we could give to bus drivers so they could get brought down. And make sure they have physicals and no medical issues that we want to be aware of when they were down at the high school. We have a couple of new coaches, a former, a former student, coaching, two former students, coaching lacrosse. We have former college coaches from Riviere that are coming up to coach our softball team. And we have a wonderful young elementary school teacher that's going to join us next year for cross-country. And, and I, and I loved the interview process. I've kind of loved interviewing people for years, because you get to really see how important children are to people. And when you ask people, what's the most important thing about coaching? It's the, these, all, every single one of these coaches, not one of them was winning. It was all about making this a good experience and a learning experience for the children. They're not going to be sports athletes. Not all these kids are going to go off and have a career in sports. But they're going to learn lessons, the lessons that they learn in the sports that they're playing now, how that can help them in their life in the future. And I think that's the most important thing that all these coaches said. And so I think we're wonderful, it's wonderful that we have them come join us. We, I had a few people come talk to me about fields in town. And they wanted a, a former basketball coach here. He'd come up and he'd talked to me and he said, there are a lot of fields in town that we're not using. And so kind of, we sat down and talked a lot and gave me a couple of names of people. We went over the Legion and he gave me some names of people over the Legion. And Matt, Bill and I went over and with Tom Tussow and had a meeting. And we're looking into the possibility of partnering with Legion to develop a, a possibility of developing that softball field into a varsity high school softball field for our girls. As opposed to right now, our girls softball field is down behind the football field. It's an eight, eight-foot wide, one-lane road to get in down there. And it's, it's not really a welcoming place for grandparents or parents or visiting schools to come. Because for one, they have a hard time finding it. And two, it's a long, steep hill. And, and the, over at the Legion, they have outdoor bathrooms that will be available right at the field. They, they're redoing their pavilion. They offer, they're offering us use of the concession stand, so the boosters to be able to use the concession stand. And we're looking into the possibility of making all the upgrades to the field. And there, we're not quite there yet, but it's a thought and it's a possibility. And I think it's kind of exciting to form a partnership. The Legion is, they, they want to be part of the community and help out. And I think that would be wonderful. And it also puts the varsity and the JV fields right next to each other. And when the bus comes in, drops them off, all the girls can be right there and get to the fields they want.
Yeah, if I could just, I just want to thank Adam for, you kind of facilitated that. I was kind of in the background, you and Tom kind of get together, kind of made the contact with the, with, with Legion. And those guys, you want to talk about a bunch of accommodating guys who want to get behind this and partner with the schools. That, those are them right there. Those are the kind of people you want to work with. And we were talking about possibilities and everything like that. And they were 100% behind it. And they, they are looking forward to being in partnership with us to provide the girls with a nice varsity softball field. That actually has, has a fence, well, the other one has a fence. But the other field that's currently down the bottom of the hill, no one knows where it is. I mean, in order to get down there, you have to go in back of the maintenance building. You go down this exceedingly steep, eight-foot rock. Well, sometimes it's like six feet wide in areas, because all the, all the drainage for the parking lot goes down that road. And then it exits out into the South Hegan. So every, every like five to 10 years, we have to do erosion control and we have to repair the road. And if you're bringing, you know, a grandparent or somebody who needs a wheelchair down that steep embankment. You better have your foot on the brake, because it is not friendly at all. So I think this is a really great compromise. And as, as Adam said, it is, it is right across the street from the, the JV softball field. And I think has the potential to be a, a really kind of little jewel that we do in partnership with them. And it's a good community partnership, definitely. You know, because they'll bear some costs, we'll bear some costs. They reap the benefits of getting the exposure. We reap the benefits of having the partnership. So I think it's really terrific. So thank you very much for that, Adam.
Thank you, Matt. Probably my biggest high point, and I don't know if some people. Came, I know Bill, I saw Bill over at the game. We had our first unified basketball team this year. And it kind of was a spur of the moment coming together. Couple, Crystal Bluto, who, what, do you know the position? She's a, her position, she's a contracted specialist in the school. And she works with the, with the Get Set children. She kind of stopped me in the hall one day and talked to me about it. And so I looked into it and next thing you know, everything just came together. And Luis Esposito stepped in to help coach and Kathy Mara jumped in and helped. And everybody was jumping in and helping. And we had an unbelievable amount of partner students sign up. And it was fun. We went over to Milford for our first game and the Milford students were amazing. They ran back and up and down the court carrying the small hoop for our kids, because most of our kids couldn't get into the regular height hoop. And they, their, their students were just as helpful to our students as we were. And so we saw that and so we went and bought some new basketball hoops for our gym. And the first game we had at home, it was, it was pretty full. And the second game we had at home, it was really full and it was loud. And everybody came and cheered. It was, it was amazing. We had people come from elementary school, we had kids come from in the town. And we got a lot of good feedback from that. And if you were there, the atmosphere was just amazing. It was, it made you want to cry.
May I just say, Adam, I'll tell you, it was the size of the crowd. You would have thought it was a state championship game. And, and one of the most inspiring things I think I've ever seen is seeing, seeing those students play on that court. With students who, you know, have disabilities, but also special abilities. And it was about as, as I said, as about inspiring as anything I've ever seen in my life. And it was, I was just glad to hear you say that we're going to have a unified track team also. Because it doesn't get any better than that.
Yep, and in the fall, we have unified soccer, so.
So, yeah, and I'll, I'll just say where I, I teach it when it kind of, and we, I've played against our unified basketball team. And when it kind of, I was on the faculty team, we got our butts kicked. Yeah, we got our butts kicked. There is no vibe like a unified basketball game vibe. That atmosphere is, is so fun and it's so energetic. I'm so glad to hear that we're doing this and that we're, we're building in the unified track and unified soccer team. It's such a great step forward and really gives a lot of these kids an opportunity that they wouldn't otherwise have. So thank you for doing that.
This summer, I have a lot on my agenda, because I basically have to review everything that I've done so far and, and be prepared for next year. I have a lot of, to go through a lot of the documents, I didn't, we didn't really have all the documents. And so some things we're creating, I've been reaching out with ADs at other schools. And, and so I also am enrolling in a couple of the NIAA leadership training courses to help me get better prepared for the position. And to kind of go through our evaluation model. In the science department, I've grown very. And actually, the, when we first came up with our evaluation system, I wasn't really much of a fan of it. It's because I didn't really understand it and didn't know how to use it. And over the years, I've gotten better at it. We've really worked together in our department. And, and it's really become kind of a good conversation piece between myself and the teachers. And so I looked at the evaluations that were in the back of the coach's handbook. And I see how we can kind of merge the two. And I'm in the process of doing a little bit of it right now for the winter sports season. I did put out an evaluation to the coaches and the parents and the students. The, the, so there's a, I gave it to the coaches to send out to the parents and the students and all their teams. And then I gave them a form to do as a pre-evaluation form. So when they sit down with me, we can kind of take all the data and kind of sit down and look at it. And what I, what wasn't in our form that I've kind of tweaked a little. And I, and is I got used to the evidence-based model that we had in, in our teaching. And so after all the questions that were in our evaluation, I've kind of put sections in where we can talk about evidence to support why we're coming up with these. Because it, it really makes a better conversation. And then it really, and, and what I found as a teacher, I always found myself, well, oh, you know, I, I thought I was, I thought I was highly effective. And then when we sit down, write the evidence, I'm like, well, you know what? There are some things I need to sit down and be able to gather. And I think that's where you get a better conversation. You, you need to have, and, and when you're just giving numbers, that's really hard to, even if the numbers have a word with them. I think when you start collecting the evidence and kind of associating that evidence with how we're going to improve. I always look at everything. I've been, I taught for 25 years and I, do I feel like I'm the best teacher now? I felt like every year I, I looked at what I did and I said, you know, like, there's so many things I need to do to get better. And am I going to do them all next year? Probably not, but I'm going to find a few things that I really need to work on. And if I only, if I focus on a few things, it can help me improve. And then the next time, I'm going to focus on something else. And we're in education. We all, I tell my daughters every day, don't cry if you make a mistake. Let's sit down, look at the mistake you made and try to figure out. Mistakes are great, you can't learn unless you make a mistake. And so let's, let's, let's look at this mistake and let's sit down and try to figure it out. And so I, I probably want to look at a little bit of the evaluation model. And, and there, there are a few things I'm going to look at, but I think I've kind of made a few tweaks this year. And so I think this summer, I want to sit down and look at that and maybe run it by some, you know, maybe Steve Clare, maybe meet with Bill and, and kind of look at it and see if it, if it makes sense. That's it. Questions?
Go ahead.
So I have a couple of things. So I'm, I'm happy about the spirit team. So I'm hoping that maybe next year, they'll be able to go to the NHIA competition. Because I always look for Merrimack and when I don't see them. As far as coaching goes, I did have the opportunity myself to be a varsity coach. And I think it's really important that, that student athletes develop, you know, technical skills and technical skills. But also discipline, because that's where those skills, those leadership skills and having coaches being able to push kids to be the best that they can be is, is so critical. And you have a critical shortage of educators everywhere. But high school coaches, especially high school coaches with educational experiences are almost not. You're not getting teacher coaches anymore. And I think that's a critical link for you as an athletic director. As far as the American Legion, I'm very excited about that. Because again, coaching for 25 years, Title IX is 53 years old. And the softball field down that hill on a third-class road that people couldn't get down is not equitable. And so to find another opportunity at the American Legion, where the varsity team can be close to the softball, the JV team. Just in case there's, you know, kids that go back and forth. Like they, they would have to run three miles to get to the other field. I love the fact, unified basketball, I love the fact of unified sports and that, here's the thing. You ran with it. That's what we talk about all the time. We want you to run with things, not say like, well, you know, like, maybe next year we'll do that. No, you had an opportunity, you found passion, you got these kids together and you did it. So congratulations and thank you for that. So congratulations and thank you for that. Um, finally, you know, life of an athlete that used to exist at the NHIA doesn't really exist anymore. But, um, I find that that program was really important in developing so- solid leadership of, athletes in our high school. And so anything I can do, I helped write that program at the NHIA, anything I can do, to help develop life of an athlete at Merrimack High School. So we can get those, student athletes to be true leaders in every place, in the classroom, in the cafeteria. If someone's sitting alone that the, you know, captain of the soccer team goes and sits with them, all of those things that that program brings to a high school. I think it's really important. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, um, I'm so excited to hear about all the unified teams. That is just, that is exciting for me. And I just think that is such a thrilling opportunity. And I agree. I have been to one of those games. It is an incredible atmosphere. I mean, I, I'm highly competitive as an athlete, but that is just a whole different atmosphere that is both competitive and welcoming, which is exactly what you said your goal is for Merrimack to be. So that was wonderful. And I, I too am excited to hear about, a potential improvement for girls softball and the opportunity to have a better place to play. And I a hundred percent agree with Lori that, that we want to ensure that we are in, not just in compliance with Title IX, but that we celebrate that our, our athletes have equity, equity across the board. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanna echo what Lori said. She actually took the words right out of my mouth, but I, I, no, not this Lori. I love what Lori said about how you, I actually really loved how you were like, I didn't really mean to have a like spirit team for basketball. And then 15 girls signed up and here we are, you know, and, and just, I love the way that you did. You took these opportunities and you just rolled with them and you didn't stop to overthink. Well, I don't know if we're ready for this, so let's hit the brakes. You said, nope, we're gonna, we're gonna make it work. And you, you got people together and you got the right teams together. And it all actually turned out pretty great. So I really appreciate that because I think that is how all of us kind of think. And that's kind of what we're looking for in leaders in our district. And I appreciate that, that is the position that you took on creating opportunities for kids. Like, okay, maybe it's not gonna be exactly perfect, but we're gonna, we're gonna do it and let's see what happens. And the stories you shared, what happened was awesome. So I really appreciate, um, I have also been in a job that I've stepped in and I've been like, okay, so here I am and I don't know what's happening and where are all the documents from, blah, blah, blah. And I know that that's a difficult position. So I appreciate you doing the best you can. And I'm looking forward to seeing what will be different, with a, with a new year and you kind of feeling like you have a little bit of traction underneath you. And you feel like you, you know where the documents are or whatever. You know, and you're able to tweak and create and spend the summer really finally feeling like you might have a chance of having ducks in a row, you know? Um, so I really appreciate the fact that you jumped in when you did and, um, really glad that it has turned out so amazingly.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'll just say too, really nice job. Just, and, uh, you know, they always say when you're in the teacher world, when you step into a, a new position, you have to be careful about what you change. And especially one with so many eyes on it, right? There's a lot of people paying attention to the athletics program. So you always have to be careful your first year about making too many changes to things, cause change is scary. And, um, and you kind of see where those little individual needs are. And that's exactly what you did. Like Jenna said, uh, and Lori said with the cheer. Um, and then with the unified programs, I mean, those were things that were like easy, like no brainers, like yeah, we can do this right now. Um, so being like careful about, you know, where we're gonna take programs, how we're gonna modify, how we're gonna change. Taking the year to observe, to learn, to listen, to hear, um, and then taking that information and then just, you know, over the next couple of years, just expanding upon them is just such a great approach. And I think it's already reaping the rewards, uh, just on what you're telling us tonight. Um, so it's, it's really exciting to see, um, us moving in that direction. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
As far as the coaches evaluation, I really like the way that you, uh, described how you're going to evaluate. And number one, you're going to mentor and you're going to go to practices. You're gonna talk to coaches. You're going to find out, uh, what's going well, what's not going well. And if they make a mistake, it's, it's not gonna be deadly. It's going to be like, okay, so what could we do better? How could we handle that? So when it comes to the evaluation, they already know what's, what's expected, but they also know where their strengths are, where their weaknesses are, how they can improve. And so, uh, like that's the perfect way to evaluate, cause we're all in, we're, it's teamwork. We, we're trying to get everyone in the boat and paddle together. And if we have people outside the boat, it's never gonna work. So I appreciate that you're working on that process, but your vision for that process is exceptional.
Thank you.
I just say, great job, Adam. And I, those of you who, um, know, uh, what an athletic director does, you know, it's one of the most busy, if not the busiest position in a school district with daytime, nighttime and weekends. And so thank you for the extraordinary commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, uh, moving on next to our central office building proposal. While Matt's getting set up, um, for those of you that were watching the deliberative session, know that, uh, an amendment, amendment was made, uh, to the proposal for the central office building to reduce it in terms of size and cost. Um, as, after listening to many of the conversations in town, um, to, um, 4.8 million, as opposed to the original 6.9. Um, and we'll discuss a little bit about that tonight.
Okay. We could, uh, dim the lights perhaps? Here she comes. We'll pretend it's last call. That's an old saying that only people, you know, Dylan and I say, yeah, I think that, that looks, that's beautiful. What we did with the building is, um, we took into account the meeting we had between the board, the planning and building committee and the ad hoc committee. There were some certain comments made, uh, that perhaps we could have some offices that are located at the schools, keep them at the schools. And the size of the conference room was too large. So we took that into, into effect. So the original size of the, uh, central office was 11,100 square feet. Uh, the new revised size is 8,700 square feet. So we cut around 2,400 square feet out of the building. The conference room is still probably around 1,100, 1,200 square feet. So it's a nice room, but it's not a board meeting room. That will mean that we don't have to have all the electronics. We don't have to have the gear. It's just a conference room. We will continue to meet in the town hall. So we can have live broadcasts here and we don't have to move a bunch of equipment and have, uh, the Merrimack TV, um, help us out with expenditures or have us bear those expenditures in that cost to make it a live meeting space. So when looking at that, uh, the base cost of this is four million. Now you gotta add in some administrative costs. There's engineers, there's civil engineers, there's testing, there's surveying, uh, geotech, that's one thing we wanna make sure we get done. I know when we, uh, demolished the, uh, the Brentwood building, all the fill is nice and compacted and everything like that, but it never hurts to have a geotech firm take a look at it, and do, uh, do some test borings and test pits and everything like that to see. Plus with all the concrete, we want that same, um, geotech firm or, uh, an engineering company to do, uh, tensile strength tests on all the concrete, like we did with the middle school 20 years ago. Uh, I forget who we hired for that. They were in Manchester, but every load that came in, every truckload that came in, a little bit was put aside. It was put in a little block and it was allowed to harden. And then they broke it and they see under what force it would break. Uh, and so some, you know, deliveries got turned back because of that. So we wanna make sure everything is done properly. And then we have a contingency. Anybody who doesn't have, going into one of these projects, who doesn't have a contingency in there, is rather foolish because we know things are gonna happen. It's gonna be out of our control. And if we don't need the contingency, we'll use that to refund part of the bond issue and take it down as far as the, uh, the payments goes. So that basically is you got $4,795,000. Then you've got some miscellaneous costs, which, which we have those, those covered. This is the proposal. Right now, we're getting a proposal from Sullivan Construction. We're getting a proposal from Ekman Construction. This is the first one to come in in advance of the, uh, deliberative session, just by a hair. And so their estimated schedule of values is $4 million, which matches the $4 million up top, over here in this area before we add in administrative costs and a contingency. Now, if you go down this sheet, you shall see a line item budget that equals $4 million. Uh, there was a comment made at the deliberative session, I believe about furnishings. Well, furnishings are blinds for windows and an entrance mat when you walk into the building. That is the extent of furnishings. So we're planning on bringing all our own desks and chairs and everything like that. Um, you know, we're not going to be buying all new furnishings for this. We're going to, you know, do what we normally do. And we're going to utilize what we have because what we have is still in very good condition. So there's no sense in buying, new tables, no desks, no chairs. We may have to fork over some money for a little bit of maybe, uh, conference room, uh, chairs, that are comfortable, not the blue chairs that we sit on when we have the budget committee meetings that, after I'm there for a couple of hours, I can't even stand up after sitting in those things. I wanna be very honest with that. So yeah, that, that is the extent of the furnishings. Finishing's are in there. That's rough, that's rough carpentry. It's finished carpentry. It's $42,000. And yeah, there is gonna be granite curbing because granite curbing stands the test of time. The stuff that's the, uh, Cape Cod berm that's asphalt, you hit with the, you hit that with a plow for three or four years. Half of it's gonna be across the parking lot. It'll be, it'll wound up on the front steps of the high school. That is not the way to go with a building that has any, any sort of, uh, if you want any sort of longevity on that. You know, in the front of the town hall, they have granite curbing out here. You know, it's good enough over here. When the middle school, when we built that, with the exception of the driveway going up, Madeline Bennett Lane, all around the middle school, there's granite curbing there. And it takes a beating because since it's just not a little piece like that, it's probably around that deep and it sinks in the ground. So you can use it. And if you ever have to do a repave, you pull the granite curbing out totally. Then you do your reclaim and then you set it back in. So over the years, you don't wind up with a curb that's an inch, in height that does not provide what a curb should do. For a vehicle veering off course, it's supposed to protect people on the sidewalk. So that's why granite. And there's probably gonna be an eight inch reveal on this. And so that's something that we definitely want to, uh, keep going with. It also includes the demolition of the current SAU building, and the demolition of the special services building. But we can't do that until we build this building first and then we move in. So this is probably gonna be a year in progress. And then where the blue house is, we're going to have parking. And we're going to expand that area to have parking for the new central office and have some, uh, lighting. That'll be, you, the wiring for that will be underground. Uh, we're not gonna do the whole campus. That was part of the master plan way, way in, in, in the past, but that was like a million dollars. It, quite frankly, i- it's not really worth the expenditure for aesthetic purposes. Rather leave it alone. There's a lot of stuff that was existing. The time to have done that would have been 40 years ago and that time has passed. So let's just leave that alone. And let's just kind of move on. Um, the floor plan. Uh, you can see we still have a conference room. We still have a dividing wall in the conference room. That can go or that can stay depending upon the budget, but we, I think we'd like to keep it there. Uh, we have offices for pretty much everybody we would like to see. This kind of harkens back to the plan we had years ago that cost around 3.1 million dollars. That never made it to, um, a deliberative session or a vote, because it's around the same size building. And it has offices for everybody that we need and it provides for any expansion capabilities that you would wanna do in the future. Although I don't see any reason for that at this point in time, but it is a complete solution. And it is a workable solution. And it is something that we sat down with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, the technology people, the, um, special ed people, everybody like that to kind of come together with who we wanted in this space and who could stay at a school. And who could stay in an existing office, because it made sense for them to be there. So this is a, a compromise, but it's, it's not a severe compromise. And it's one I think that makes, that makes sense. We still have an elevator or lift, uh, that goes down to the basement where there is storage. So that's still part of the plan. And when you look at the, cost, because the, the highest years payment on the 6.9 was around $676,000. And for the 4.8 is around $470,000. So that's, that's year number two. So on a $500,000 house, that's $47 a year. That's less than a dollar a day. On a $500,000 house, to have a brand new central office, that will serve this district into perpetuity. Um, it will be maintained. It will be, how old is this building? 1800s? It's still standing. I see this standing a hundred years from now. It's still gonna have viability. It's still going to be relevant. It is still going to be used and it's still going to be in good shape, in good condition. Because as everybody knows, in Merrimack, we have Tom Tussell, we have the maintenance department. We have the capital improvement plan. We maintain our facilities. We make sure they're in good condition. If there's an issue, we jump on it right away. If there's a possibility in the future that something needs to be done, we're proactive. We don't wait for disaster to hit. We don't work off of disaster. The only time we did was when Hurricane Sally blew the, blew the roof off the, the, the blue house and special services, which was quite interesting. I remember the first day I walked in there and it's all of a sudden, John Fabrizio was the, uh, special ed director at the time. Kind of looked up and he says, I, I got a skylight in my office now. I says, yeah, I know you too, John. Your roof is gone. I mean, it was incredible, but we got that fixed ver- very quickly. So the tax impact over the, the years, and that's on a 15-year bond, is based on three and a quarter percent increase. And like I said, highest years payment, less than a dollar a week. And right now, you know, for a 20-year bond, it'd be 3.4. The New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, I got an email from Tammy St. Julyna. She's the executive director of the bond bank. I've known Tammy for 25 years, um, when she first started out there. And their, their latest bond issue was a 3.9%, 3.09%. So less than the three and a quarter that we've been talking about here. So the, there is more than likely the possibility for those yearly annual payments to be less than what we're quoting right now. But I'm gonna stick with the three and a quarter. I'm not gonna jump to the 3.09 until, you know, we get closer. April 26th is the last date to do the, uh, the bond application. You know, which brings me to, boy, it'd be nice if we had a March meeting, because then we could have some time to do the bond application. I'm gonna work on it anyway. In anticipation of doing it, I'm gonna start the bond application. In fact, I already have. And so once we came, once we arrived at the 4.8 figure, that's what we're gonna look at. And so in order to get that off the, off the ground, you know, the town has to do some work too, because they wanna, they wanna know about the town's financials. What's the town surplus? Because the retained, retained fund balance, it, it has a lot to do over the course of like a five-year period, of what your final rate really is gonna be, even though this is a investment pool, this is a bond pool. It still helps if you've got a good rating from Moody's and S and P. And that's, that's what they look at. So, that was a quick kind of overview. There is 24,000, 2,400 square feet that's reduced out of this building. We think it's a nice dis- We think it's a nice design. We think it flows well. We think it gives us adequate workspace. And we think it'll, uh, be something that the town can be proud of and the town will enjoy for a hundred and some odd years. So however long they want to keep this here. So we just appreciate everybody, you know, at the deliberative session, talking about this, giving their opinion. And we appreciate the board for reducing the amount of this one article by 4.8, knowing that we had justification in our back pocket that we really weren't ready to share at that point in time to justify that 4.8. So. Thank you.
So I just have a couple clarifying thing that I think that is important for the public. And the original, when, um, Matt first went to the planning and building committee, the conference room was this size. It was at the planning and building committee that one of the, um, planning and building committee members is a civil engineer from UNH, who's a builder, said, I think we should make the conference room for pennies on the dollar larger. So, um, when people were saying, well, how come you went big and now you're with small? There was a whole process there that, uh, maybe people missed. So the school district actually came in with the conference room this size. It happened at the table that we expanded it, but, um, Rich is here and he, he also knows we did cut things down too, but that was, uh, you know, brought up and, and supported. So the room would be able to be used for, for multiple purposes.
Yeah. And it still can be used for multiple purposes, but like I stated, it is not going to be the board room where you like Bedford has their meetings in the conference room. It's televised from the superintendent's office. That's where they have their meetings. We're not doing that. We're coming here. This is an existing resource. The town has put a lot of money into this room. And I think this room is exceedingly adequate, especially when we have Justin and Nick and Grace back there. You know, making sure everything is recorded correctly and properly and the microphones work and we don't have to fuss around with it. Um, you know, I hate to call Jason because, you know, I can't find the microphones or I'm hassling. I'm just running around like my chicken with my head, head, head cut off. This is a nice venue. So we could still have some good meetings in there. We could still have some PD in there. But it's just not going to be, um, a place where we, we broadcast live. It'll be this room here. So let's take advantage. Let's leverage what we currently have and not look to add more. So, but yeah, over the years, we have had several iterations of this. I could show you. We had an addition of the high school. Uh, a one story addition of the high school proposed, a two story addition of the high school proposed. Get, guess which one was the, the biggest cost? It was the addition of the high school. Because you had to deal with the egress coming out of the side door and then you have to build some special hallways so kids could get out. They just couldn't get out of the building. You know, so it turned into kind of a, an egress issue again. We don't want to build an egress issue into a brand new building. And so we have been through so many iterations of this building in so many forms and fashion. And I'm sure Rich is, are you nodding your head, Rich? Okay. And, uh, you know, that we have arrived at this and I think it's, I think it's a great, uh, I can think it's a great design.
So I also have a couple clarifying remarks and a question. First of all, I want to thank you and Ken. You guys took your winter break and, and that's one thing that was, in all the questioning and the limited time we had to present at the deliberative session, those, um, days leading right up to the DS is when this work really was in full swing. And that is why we didn't have this complete package to present at the DS. Um, and so I just wanted to make that clear that you guys were working over that, that winter break, which was just prior to our meeting. Also, and I'm glad you still have the floor plan up here, and I wanted to clarify based on questions at the deliberative session, the secure vestibule, that is to buzz people in. Right now, you can just walk into our student services or superintendent building. And this is to provide security to our employees. That is the world we live in. We provide that security in our high school. And that's really, really an important component. Now for my question, uh, in the items funded outside of the project, do we have any idea ballparking that building technology piece?
About what?
Building technology. It's TBD.
Yeah, it's TBD. That'll probably be out of the contingency, but I couldn't imagine because we, we wired Reed's Ferry Elementary School for, well, it was a long time ago. But that'll probably be like, like $50,000 worth of cabling, a server rack, um, switches. We all have computers, so I'm bringing my computer because I like my computer. And so I'm going to bring my computer and Bill's going to bring his and everybody's going to bring their own machines. So it's just cabling, Cat Five, you know, Cat Five E drops in, in every, uh, office and a server rack with a couple of switches in it. And that's pretty much all we need. We need a fiber run going from the high school, um, which is the hub into this building, but that shouldn't be an issue at all.
All right. Thank you.
Naomi, did I see your hand up?
This kind of follows along from what you were saying before, Matt. Um, where I think a lot of people in the public, uh, feel like this came out of the blue. Which I can see why if you haven't been to all of these meetings and you haven't been, been watching them and the planning and building committee meetings aren't televised. So that's a whole nother layer is, um, and people are saying, you know, why haven't you considered this option? Why haven't you considered that option? And the reality is that, that you have multiple times for multiple iterations over about 15 years. And all of those people have done all of this work and decided that this is the best option. This is the best balance of the space we need while still, um, using what we have. As you said, we're going to keep the same furniture. We're going to keep the same workstations in terms of computers. Um, there are some positions where you decided that, you know, at those positions really will be better off in the schools where they are. So we don't need to need that, need to move them. So we can make the building a little smaller. And so I, I just wanted to reiterate that, that there's a good 15 years plus of work that has gone into this project. And it's very appreciated and it needs to get done now.
Well, thank you for that. But yeah, if people think that this is something that, that came up quickly. No, this, this is because there's been a lot of dedicated people on the school board, on the planning and building committee, in meetings we've had with the town in front of the planning board and the capital improvement program, talking about central office. I think maybe seven or eight years ago, we had a, a, a meeting with the planning board and they deemed this as urgent. And that was probably eight, nine years ago. And this is the town planning board. Uh, Rich remembers probably the exact same year because he's an engineer and he's got a mind sharp as a tack for those things, right? But still, uh, this has been in the, in the works for a long time. And I have several iterations of this building looking 100 different ways. So to put this together, we knew exactly, we knew what the number was, was going to, we were going to be able to hit that number with confidence. And we were going to come up with a building design that was going to fit that number. We just didn't want to put something out that was not complete.
And again, you know, as a, as a decision-making body, we need to have all of these conversations so people can hear them. So when people come to the deliberative session and say, like Naomi said, this came out of nowhere. It's like, well, no, this, we're having these conversations, um, now. So a lot of these, um, like this design, you know, this week, uh, this is really the first time we've seen this layout, um, that we've been able to show folks. Um, which by the way, it looks to me very much like the Bedford SAU, having been in there a few times. It's a very similar layout. Um, so speaking of, you know, comparing other SAU buildings to ours, um, I see a lot of similarities there. Um, and referring to some of the comments we got, uh, at the deliberative session, um, you know, about, you know, the trustworthiness of these companies. And I think Rich even spoke to it, who's, again, he's here by the way. Um, uh, Marinese, um, is, this is what they do. They, they build school buildings. They built our middle school. They've built administrative buildings across the state. Um, and if they give us a plan and a layout and a, and a, a price, you know, a, a line item price point, then I, I trust what they're going to do is going to be top quality stuff. Um, I don't doubt them in any stretch of the imagination. Um, and there was another comment, um, actually by one of our planning and building committee members that I think got lost a little bit. Um, is that, uh, the footprint for this cost is already built into our budget. Um, because of the middle school bond that we are finishing up right now, um, that we've, uh, paid for. That footprint already exists in our budget. So this isn't necessarily adding anything to our pre-existing budget. In fact, if anything, it's taking a little bit away because it's less than the middle school budget bond. Um, and I think that was something that got a little lost in translation because I heard a lot of people saying that it was going to be either like a separate cost or on top of our operating budget. It's already built into that. Um, so I just want to make sure that that's very, very clear and not in addition to. So.
Yeah. Cause the last year, the middle school bond was 793,000. And so the highest year payment of this is 470. So this is savings, a savings of 200,000, 205,000 dollars, um, in, in year two, which is the highest year.
So if anything, it's bringing the budget down a little bit, not a lot, but.
Not a lot, but the, the, yeah, 200,000 is 200,000. You know, here, here's, here's, here's Marinese. I mean, you know, I mean, you, you can go through their portfolio, the internet connections a little bit, um, but they, they did Pinkerton. They've done the auditorium at Pinkerton.
Oh, it's a gorgeous building.
They've done the science center. They've done Bedford Middle School, Bedford, Bedford High School, Bedford Middle School. Um, they have done all over the place, Pinkerton Academy, freshman building, Bedford Middle High School, Winnifalum, Epping, Belmont High, Pinkerton Academy, Arts and Humanities Center. I mean, these, these guys have been around for a good 30, 40 years. And with the middle school, as I was talking to Bill, we got a kindergarten construction grant for a million dollars when we built the middle school. Because when we built the middle school, we created space in the elementary schools to house half-day kindergarten. So by them talking to Helen Chitainus at the state, because she recommended them as an architect, they brokered the grant piece of this that would allow the state to give us a million dollars to put in half-day kindergarten to create space in these buildings by building the middle school, moving that grades six, not six, grades four and five, four, five and six into the middle school. So fifth grades came out of the elementary school. So that's how that all started. And if we would have abandoned half-day kindergarten, uh, within a 20 year period, we would have had to have give back, given back that million dollars. I think people kind of lost that in perspective. But you know, seeing it's, it's been 20 years. So now we don't have to worry about giving back the middle, the, the million dollars. But kindergarten's here to stay, right? That's not going anywhere. Um, I think the people appreciate that, but that was one of those things that if you go with half-day kindergarten and you take this money, if you don't keep it for 20 years, you have to give it back. So they were really key in everything that they, that we did as far as that project goes and other projects that go. So this is a very good firm and I'm very comfortable with them. And Hutter Construction, and we're going to get the pricing from Sullivan. And I talked with Tom, the president of the company, um, last week and Ekman, Ekman Construction too. So we'll see how that all plays out and we'll be looking at the quality of the bids and the, the low bids, the price point, and, uh, we'll, we'll see where it takes us. So.
Well, thank you, Matt. Appreciate all the work, um, and all the energy. And of course, uh, Rich, who is here as well, who, um, uh, for years has been working on this. So thank you again, Rich. All right. Uh, moving on to review of the deliberative session.
Well, I'd like to, um, just have a couple of slides put up and, um, first of all, I want to echo what all of you have, um, said, and that is the appreciation for the voters for, uh, passing the budget and the building along to, to a vote on April 9th. Uh, just want to put the, the budget request in perspective. Um, in talking with, with Matt, because I've only been here two and a half years now. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but between 2014 and about 2022, I believe that the, um, the school budget came in under default. Um, that's concerning in that a default or below default budget does not address a lot of the needs of students. And so I think for a number of years, we have struggled to make the improvements that we needed to make. Um, and I want to thank you and thank the, the budget committee and, and the voters through the deliberative session and at the ballot box for helping us to bring this school district to a point where we're making excellent progress right now. And I think several of you have alluded to that, uh, tonight. In my first year here, we presented a budget in fiscal 23 that was a little bit above default. Fiscal 24, the current fiscal year, a little bit more above default. And, and the budget we're proposing for fiscal 25 is above default also. But I wanted to revisit a couple of slides. To present to the residents, to the taxpayers, what we've been able to do with the funds that they have provided, that you've supported, the budget committee has supported also. Um, because I think it's, it's significant. Our reading and math scores were not good enough. Plain and simple, not good enough. And we've been addressing that. And we talk about return on investment. Uh, the residents are going to see a return on investment that will be very pleasing to them. Um, through Amy, um, who, as I said, is on roller skates with jet packs on them. Uh, we've made significant curriculum improvements in reading and math and science. And, you know, she can always speak very eloquently and very, very thoroughly to that. Huge, huge changes and improvements. We have excellent staff. But we had not provided them with adequate materials, supplies and programs. When I first started here, we had no alternative pathways program. Every student had to conform to the program, the standard program at the high school, and we know that's not the case. And so we met with the high school administration and who were very much on board. And we said, look, we want to make sure that we tailor programs to the needs of students, not asking the students to adopt and adapt to a one-size-fits-all model, which some of them were not interested in doing. And so with the hire of Harley Hall, who has been just superb, uh, Lori has helped us greatly with the grant, uh, funds. With support of you, the building committee, once again, the taxpayers, we have 16 students enrolled. 12 seniors will receive a diploma of those 16 instead of dropping out of school. That is a result of community support. That's why we are so enthusiastic about what our fiscal 25 budget proposal will continue to bring. Um, Harley Hall has also worked extraordinarily hard in bringing extended learning opportunities for students. Quality programming with great fidelity, with standards, um, with criteria for providing a credit for those extended learning opportunities. Uh, I always like to call them the classroom without walls. Those opportunities that present great learning opportunities for students. Once again, through Amy, certainly improved progress monitoring, monitoring tools. Allowing us to, to understand where students are and prescribe lessons, programming for them. Uh, that is much more, uh, in line with their needs. It takes away the guesswork because there is no room for guesswork in this profession. Provides solid data from which we make sound decisions on what children's needs are and what we need to do to meet those needs. Uh, as we've said before, and Matt and, uh, and Adam were spending, uh, expanding, um, community partnerships. We're very excited about, uh, the possibility of partnering with the Legion, uh, to make a first-class softball facility for our female softball players. Amy, if we could do the next slide, please. We've increased professional development for the staff. Several years ago, we had no early release days. You have now approved five early release days, which have been extraordinarily important for us. Not only for professional development. Not only for professional development related to new curriculum initiatives. But also those mandatory programs and professional development that were required to provide to the staff. Matt has worked unendingly on school safety. Talk about a person who has his track shoes on with, when grant opportunities are available. He's right at the starting line and the first of, first to. Apply for a grant, three hundred thousand, I think was the most recent. Matt, for locks and other security measures. And we're very proud to be able to do that. This budget will allow us also to continue to provide competitive wages and benefits. This is a labor market. Like any other labor market, either the public or private sector. We have to be able to attract and retain staff members. With the collective bargaining agreement that you approved and the. Budget Committee supported and the voters are supported. We've seen a marked increase in the quality of applicants for jobs. Particularly for teaching jobs in the district because we are now more competitive than we were several years ago. With your support also, we're developing, as we reported earlier, a three-year strategic plan that will help us continue to set the course. For the school district over the next three to five years. Most importantly, I think, and above all else, what you've allowed us to do. Is create a, a culture of trust, support, respect. Communication and one that's always, always student-focused because that is common to every quality. School district. We don't make decisions that are political in nature. We make decisions that are based on the needs of students. And so I just wanted to take a minute to explain to the voters why our budget in fiscal two thousand, two thousand twenty-five is. Is again beyond the default level budget. We are moving forward. We need to move forward. We are improving and are going to continue to improve our math and science scores and all other. Scores in our programs throughout the district, K to twelve. We have a central office team that is as good as, or better than any other that I have ever seen. And Amy and Matt and Melissa in our HR department, they are superb. And so, working with them, working with our leadership team, working with our staff, you, the Budget Committee and the community. We hope you have the trust in us to know that we're going to provide you with a more solid and increasing return on your dollars invested. That's our commitment. That's why you pay our salaries. And if you have any questions, I want to mention to the. To the residents of the town, if you have any questions on either the, the SAU office or our budget that is proposed. Please call us and we'll provide you with the facts. Unfortunately, this is where sometimes the best in people come out, but sometimes. People also make regrettable comments online about the budget or about the SAU office. We want voters to have accurate, honest information. And we'll present you with that information. If you want to come into the office, if you want to call us, if you want to email us, we'll, we'll answer any of your questions. Okay, there's, there's a lot at stake here. We can either continue to move forward or we begin to regress, and we don't want to regress. We've got a long way to go. We're committed to doing that and we want to do it. We take great pride in doing that. And we'll do anything to try and earn the voters' support. To provide information so that they know what they're getting in this budget that's proposed. And I'll stop talking, answer any of your questions or listen to any of your comments. You know, we present this budget with, with a great sense of pride, that we're, we're on the move in the right direction and we want to continue with that work.
Go ahead, Jenna.
So, one thing I want to say is, I've lived in Merrimack a really long time. I moved here when I was four, I think. And so I've lived here my, my whole life with, you know, college and other times. And for a long time, we had really consistent leadership. I mean, Marsha Frie was my, my. Elementary school principal, and she went on to be the superintendent. Frank Oil was the assistant principal, you know, like, these people. Contributed so much to the Merrimack School District and we had long-term leadership. And then we had a very tumultuous period of time with COVID and, and a transition from long-term leadership and. And it was a really tumultuous is the best word I can think of time. What I want the people in Merrimack to know is that I think we all realize that. Out of all of that transition, we have ended up with what I would say. Probably is the best administrative leadership in the state of New Hampshire. I'm not exaggerating even a little bit, yeah? I mean, Bill, you coming with your absolute wealth of knowledge to put fresh eyes on our district. From a successful district that you, you provided the long-term leadership for, to be able to come and provide fresh eyes. Has been absolutely one of the best things that we've ever done. Amy, I don't know where we found you, but it, I swear you dropped out of the sky. Roller skates and jet fuel, whatever you said. That's it. That's, I can't say enough how you have looked at what we do in this district. And you have said, we can do better. And you haven't said, well, we should wait, or well, we should wait. You've, you've said, we cannot wait. And I know that the people in this town want that. They want the best education for their students. And we have done that and you have helped push us in that direction. You know, Melissa and Matt, absolutely the absolute best on the administrative side of managing the staff and the, and the maintenance. And like you said, the facilities and. I am so proud to be part of this right now. Because I, I really, every day, know we are in the absolute best hands. So I, I just really think Merrimack needs to hear that. If you've ever listened to, you know, Bill and Amy talk about this district and what needs to happen, they're not, they, they don't have rose-colored glasses on. There's, they, they see this district for exactly what needs to happen. They see its strengths and its weaknesses and they are moving us forward. And. I am just so grateful for everything that you're doing because I have kids in this district and we want this district to be. Exceptional and I, we are moving in that direction. I'm very grateful. I, I'm also very, very grateful. You know, Lori, you came in as a board member and you said, we need to have goals meetings. And you were the one that drove that. And that has also been transformative. And the synergy and the new, the new perspective on it is, all of that has. In three years, I think, done something incredibly transformational within this district. And I'm so glad to be part of this team that is, is moving in that direction. And I'm just so grateful for, for all of you.
Thank you for the kind comments.
I echo all of that, but I just want to remind everyone where we were three years ago. Masks, returning to school, what that looked like. Were we going to have concurrent teaching or face-to-face learning? Those were the decisions facing this board this time, three years ago. We were facing the transition out of our superintendent. And we were, we were figuring out what that was going to look like coming out of COVID. And wow, we have new curriculum that is grounded in the science of reading, grounded in excellent math strategies. Excellent science learning. We are moving towards individualized assessments with eye ready. And the, the feedback from parents has just been incredible that their students are learning so much. And they are learning about their students and that is helping teachers so much. The upgrade to our technology infrastructure, think about where we were techno- technologically. I mean, Matt knows the, the servers and the lands that we needed to replace and all of that, just to move from what we learned during COVID. I am just so excited about everything that Bill and Amy and Matt and Melissa have brought to the table. But one of the best parts of the last three years, and it's been hard. We've had to make massive decisions facing test scores, facing learning loss. Facing the need to expand our summer programs, all of those pieces. But working together, there's not been a friction, disagreement. Maybe thinking about doing different things, but there's been more brainstorming and creativity at our goals meetings, at this table. And I am just so pleased to see where we're going. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. It takes a long-term time to move that iceberg and we're moving it and we're moving in, in that direction. And I believe that the budget reflects that. I know we made hard decisions this year. I, and I, I appreciate your willingness to work with us on that budget. The negotiations, working with MTA, working with Mesa, again, it's so important. We want great teachers. We have to pay them what they're worth. And we want great support staff. We have to pay them what they're worth. And that is so important. And we, the voters came through for the teachers last year. I believe the voters will come through for our support staff this year. So all of those things work together. Everything that happens at central office, every day, every moment of every day is for every student. Everything that happens with every administrator is for the benefit of the student. That is the, that is the goal of every person who works in this district. Is to meet the student needs and help them thrive, not just graduate, but thrive and be lifelong learners. And so that is one of the things that I love about all the, the presentation we have in front of us. But all of the last three years as well has been outstanding. And lastly. I loved how many people came out for the deliberative session. I, I have been to them as a member of the community where there were about twenty-five people who came. And it was wonderful. Yes, there was passion. Yes, there was, there were questions. Yes, there were people who were. Just getting involved maybe for the first time, which is awesome. And I hope they will continue to do so because a community that comes together. And asks the hard questions, works together and will move forward together. So I'm just going to go in a little different direction and. You know, I think that anyone's frustration at the deliberative session is they forget how we actually fund. Public school education. And we have to keep. People accountable because public school education is the backbone of America and we need to keep supporting. Public school education and we can't take out of this budget to go other places. It, and so I, I think we just need to hold everybody responsible that is representing us. And they need to know that we believe in public schools. And if we do that, we'll be able to accomplish everything that we've, we've set our sights on.
And I'll, I'll just, same, same, same thing. So many things that I feel the same way that are, my colleagues have set up here. I always go back to when I went to that delegate assembly in the fall, to what I heard one of the superintendents say up there. And, and that progress moves at the speed of trust. And when you have leadership and a community that buys into that leadership. And a, and a body like a, like a school board who buys into that leadership and trusts that leadership, that's when progress is made. And, you know, these guys are, they're in the trenches. They're not sitting in their offices over, you know, communicating over computer screens and emails. You talk to any teacher in our district, any administrator in our district, and they know what our leadership looks like. And they talk to our leadership and they have conversations and they have the hard conversations. And only then can you really trust who's running the show. So it's such an important thing to have that trust. And, you know, when we were presented with this budget. A few months ago, there was, you know, the same, we had many of the same reactions many of the folks had at the deliberative session of like. Wow, we're having some pretty tough conversations right now. Certainly conversations I never thought we would have. And when we take the time to sit and listen and look at the rationale and the reasoning for a lot of these decisions. And the, you, the clouds start to part a little bit and you start to understand like, okay, this is, this is something we need to kind of take seriously and take a look at. So it's, it's a hard thing to do, to have to stand in front of people of like, you know what, I think this is, this is the right direction. And not everybody's probably going to agree with that, which of course, that's the beautiful thing about public discourse and democracy. Is that we can have those discussions. We're not always going to agree on everything. But being able to have that discussion in a, in a way that we can move forward is just, it's invaluable. So. I guess my point is, I, I, you know, the reason why I can skip behind this budget and support it is because I know you have done the work. And I know you've looked into our programs and I know you've seen, these are the things that need to change in order to move us forward. So that's why I'm, I'm behind it and I support it. So thank you very much for all of this and continuing to do even more because we're not done. So, so thank you again.
I want to, I want to share a quick personal story. And it does relate back to the budget in that one of the pieces of feedback. I've heard about the budget is, is, is there's this knee-jerk reaction of, well, our test scores are bad. Why are we spending more money, right? And I think Bill and Amy just did a really excellent job of illustrating all the things that, that they've done over the last couple of years. That, that the money that we're spending is actually being invested and we're going to see the return on investment. My story, and this is, you know, sample size of one and it's an anecdote, so take it for what it's worth, but I have two kids. One of them is in seventh grade this year. The other one is in second grade. And the older one, COVID was in his third grade year. So I had what I would consider, he had a normal school experience. Up through halfway through third grade. I can see the difference in the way the two of them have been taught. Same school, same family life. It's better the way it is now than it was when he went through second grade and that is amazing.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Any other new business?
So I just want to ask a question. We have talked about that we're doing wit and wisdom out of surplus. And then I think there was some question about whether we needed to take a vote on that. Do we need to take a vote on that?
I'm sorry. I jumped, I jumped the gun. We, we, we need to schedule a public hearing for that.
Okay.
Yes. So next meeting, if we can do that, first off, that'd be awesome.
Cool. Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. And I think this first one is, we didn't quite have them all. There was an issue with them at our last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. For February thirteenth. So I'll make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes for February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, signify by saying aye. Aye, accepted, five zero zero. Moving on to the public and non-public minutes for February nineteenth, I'll make a motion to accept. Second, discussion. All those in favor of accepting the minutes for February nineteenth, signify by saying aye. Aye, five zero zero. February fourth, non-public meeting. Yeah, non-public meeting minutes. Yes, February, March fourth, boy, oh, boy, March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, non-public meeting minutes. Do I have, I'll make a motion to accept. Second, all those in favor of discussion, all those in favor, five zero zero. And lastly, February seventh, special meeting minutes, March seventh. Two thousand twenty-four, special meeting minutes, I'll make a motion to accept. All discussion, all those in favor. Five zero zero, meaning minutes are accepted. Moving on to consent agenda.
There are two resignations in your packet tonight. Both are school counselors. One is Rebecca Spots. Who is currently a school counselor at the high school and Leslie Warhalla, who's currently a counselor at Merrimack Middle School. And you'll have the, the opportunity to read both of their heartfelt thank yous. And as they prepare to leave the district, I just want to take a minute to thank them for all they've done.
And do we vote on that now or do we do the nomination as well?
All together, yeah. There's also a nomination in your packet. Tracy Griffin-Hagan comes forward as the special ed coordinator at Thornton's Ferry School.
Do we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Five zero zero. All right, moving on to committee reports. Do we have any? I was not able to attend the professional development committee meeting last week. I had rehearsal last one. But Amy was there. What did we miss, Amy? Did we miss anything?
Things are moving along. People are taking courses and getting recertified and it's exciting stuff.
Great. Any other committee reports? Cool. Correspondence, I did receive a correspondent, I think we all did, an email. Just with some concerns about the French program and, and kind of looking into the discussion surrounding. Expanding that program to make a more world language.
and, and kind of looking into the discussion surrounding expanding that program to make a more world-language-friendly offering at J Muse. So we'll definitely be in touch, and we are very interested in all those same things that that person was interested in, so. Any other correspondents?
Just continued correspondence regarding questions about the SAU building, the budget. They're numerous and extensive, and they're easy questions to answer, or I have forwarded them on to Central Office.
Yeah, I think Matt, at this point, wishes I would lose his email address, and I wish I was kidding, because I'm not kidding. Same on the correspondence on that.
Any comments from the board? Okay, we will open up a public comment on agenda items. If you'd like to speak on any of the items that were discussed tonight, we encourage you to come up to the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record, and if you are a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name. The microphone is open.
Chuck Mauer, Ford Depot Street.
It is imperative that we find a solution to the constant stress and anxiety of funding education in the town of Merrimack. There has been a war on education for the last forty years, and it, it is reaching quite a crescendo in the most recent legislative proposals, and we have no idea where it will stop. Mrs. Rothaus is correct in that we need better representation from the people we elect here in Merrimack to go to Concord and represent our best community interests. They are not state representatives. They are Merrimack representatives to the state of New Hampshire. The responsibility is to the people of the town of Merrimack. What we have seen for a number of years, and we continue to see, is a true Greek dilemma, where you are forced to choose. You only have two choices on the ballot, yes or no. Do you want to support the budget, or do you want the budget to fail? And along this forty-year war, we've incorporated these strange things like Senate Bill Two, where we now have default budgets that, well, we're not sure what they're really supposed to do, except not let the bottom of the bucket fall out in one meeting in a school district in New Hampshire. But we don't seem to mind if it leaks over forty years, and that bucket is getting even leakier. We want the people of Merrimack to be happy. We want them to share the pride and the productivity that, that we work for here in the school district with our, with our children, and the fact that all of these "children," quote-unquote, are going to be productive members of society, and that's why we need to educate them. Yes, we would like our own children to be very well-educated, but we want everybody to be educated, so we have a working society that's breaking down here in Merrimack and across the state of New Hampshire. When you have two unattractive, impossible alternatives to choose from, yes, I want my property taxes to go up, or, yes, I want my property taxes to go down, and that results in less service, less educational services. We have no other revenue streams for the school district. We have to stop seeing it as a choice between two bad things, because that never gets solved, because you can only vote for a bad thing to happen, and it yo-yos back and forth. We have to come to the point where we realize this is a predicament. Now, we can realize that we can create a solution for the predicament. You can't create a solution when you only have two bad choices. We need to come together as community leaders and discuss this. We need our community representatives to join us in discussing these kinds of things and to bring a better atmosphere to how we fund our communities. It's not just Merrimack. It's happening all over the state. And yet we continue to have wild legislation attacking schools. Our job is not finished. We've come a long way in two and a half years, boy, oh, boy, and I'm very grateful for that. And I'd like to think that I've done my share, and I'd like to continue to do my share. But we have work to do. There is action to take. We cannot sit on any of our laurels. Now, if I may, on a local educational level, I would like to, number one, congratulate that we now have directors who come before the board with a report that sound professional, sound reasonable, sound as if they are insightful and deep-thinking about their responsibilities, and overall, A for conduct. That hasn't happened in the past. Yes, people have been dissatisfied in the past and found that there was little they could do about it. Well, it, it takes a community. It takes a lot of people to come together and find a way forward, a pathway forward. You've managed to do that to this point. There is more work to do. Again, I would like you to look at block scheduling. That is a way that we can deliver more educational services with less cost. I realize it may have some conflict between management and labor, but I'm addressing management right now, and that's a management tool that's important. Other districts use it quite successfully. It's not a new idea. It's just a new idea to Merrimack. And I would like to, again, speak to the day what I know is fast arising, that we have full competency assessment. Exceptionally pleased to see that our pathways to graduation have managed to reduce our dropout rate. But full competency assessment will also contribute mightily to at least reducing, if not entirely eliminating, our dropout rate. So kudos to the community that has supported you all for the last two and a half, three years. Kudos to the future. We'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other additional public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment for tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second. All those in favor? We'll see you in two weeks, everybody.